I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members Brown, Hazen, Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the April 1st, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any corrections? Okay. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? Okay, I do want to make a note that at the request of several council members, under new business, items one and two will be discussed tonight. These are items related to a proposed planned unit development on University Avenue, but no vote will be taken tonight. They will be moved to a special meeting of the city council next week, but there will be discussion tonight. Under public input, I have a card from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. A card from Eldress Melinda Carr, who expresses continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. And a card from Jason Rock, who wishes to speak on Vision Zero.
Thank you. So, I'm here because I want to talk about the preventable death of Shelley Taylor. When I read the quote attributed to Lieutenant Searls in the New Gazette, "All the indications are that this was just a conflict between a driver and a pedestrian. It was just an accident. It's heartbreaking," I got angry. An accident is something that happens unexpectedly and unintentionally, and there's very little about a pedestrian death at the intersection of Main and Vine that can be described as unexpected or unintentional. Let's deal with unintentional first. While of course, no driver intends to kill a pedestrian, the reality is that the intersection design at Vine and Main intentionally prioritizes car traffic, and that comes at the cost of pedestrian lives. Most egregiously, the intersection allows right turns on red and left turns without a green arrow, undermining any safety that the walk signals might provide. The intersection is one of the biggest in the city, and both roads and the intersection are designed for moving car traffic and moving it fast. It's well documented that the largest factor in driver speeds is road design, not posted speed limits, and while Vine and Main are both posted 30 miles per hour there, their design undermines that speed limit. As for unexpected, the reality is that I am not surprised that a person died at Vine and Main. I expressed concern for pedestrians' safety on Main and Vine in an October 22nd, 2018 email to Brandon Boys. I wrote, "One thing that is abundantly clear, if you spend enough time in Urbana as a resident, is that crossing Vine, and to a lesser extent, Main Street, represent a burden for pedestrians. I hope that as part of the development at 200 South Vine, the city is planning to rethink the design of Vine and Main Streets with pedestrians in mind." The most frustrating part of this for me is that I can't shake the feeling that easily a different person could be delivering this speech with the opening lines, "I'm here to talk about the preventable death of Jason Rock. I have lost track of the number of times in the past year that a driver has put my life at risk. A driver leaving a driveway on County Road 700 North almost sideswiped me. A driver on Main Street in front of the Baptist Church passed me with inches to spare because cars were double parked on the street for a funeral. A driver on Main Street near Crane didn't stop when I was crossing at the crosswalk. A driver on Water Street passed me to the right of me at the stop sign and then cut back in front of me while I was on my bike." These near misses happen not because Urbana drivers are worse than any other drivers, but because the designs of the roads sacrifices pedestrian and cyclist safety for driver convenience. The reality is that the next pedestrian or cyclist's death in Urbana is a matter of when, not if. I'm begging the city to adopt a Vision Zero plan because these deaths are preventable. And I'm not the only person that feels this way. I'll share some quotes that I've collected in the -- oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you've got two minutes.
Okay.
You've got two minutes.
All right. I'll share some quotes that I've collected in the past few days from people that couldn't make it to this meeting. Lily Robertson, who lives near Race and Washington, shared, "I was not surprised that someone died at that intersection. I primarily shop at the Co-op because I don't want to cross Vine. The fact is that if you're a cyclist or a pedestrian, you have to have constant vigilance, especially in this town. The CU area is built for cars, plain and simple." Reddit user RSK222, a graduate student that lives in Urbana, wrote, "I walk through this intersection quite a bit, and I'm kind of surprised this doesn't happen more often. People often don't slow down or stop to turn right, and they aren't looking for pedestrians in the crosswalk." Keely Wiegand wrote, "The thing that made me maddest was the way Lieutenant Rich Searls said it was just an accident. It wasn't just an accident. It was unsafe design amid car culture that led to a homicide." I'll close with a quote from Northeastern University Professor of Civil Environmental Engineering, Peter Firth, who does a lot of work about Vision Zero stuff. "A system that is safe only if people do not make mistakes is not a system designed for humans." The reality is, that intersection is a system which is only safe if drivers and pedestrians don't make mistakes, and we've seen what happens because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Eric?
Just a comment. The -- I -- okay, I'm a little -- feeling a little abashed by talking about procedure, because this was a tragedy, but you might want to direct the issue, as well as the full council, to the Traffic Commission, which is responsible for considering changes in lights, crosswalk configurations, et cetera like that, and recommending that to the council.
Okay. I received another card from Ann Parkinson, who wishes to talk about 5G implementation. Would you like to speak now?
Hi, I'm Ann Bjornson Parkinson, and my family and I are pretty new to the Urbana area. We bought a house in Urbana.
Mayor, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. My name's Ann Bjornson Parkinson, and we're fairly new to the CU area. We bought a house in Urbana in July. How's this?
It's good.
Okay, and we are in Ward Seven. Whoops, I don't know what happened. We're in Ward Seven. I just learned. And so, I -- my background is, I'm a military brat, and my dad was in telecommunications in Saudi Arabia in the Air Force. I lived in Tripoli, Libya, and I worked for the Department of Defense purchasing -- I didn't purchase, but it was the telecommunications purchasing division. I attended Northwestern University and lived in Evanston for 30 years. I was an editor for a software company and mergers and acquisition consulting company before I had kids, and then I became a TA for preschool and elementary while my kids were around, and two of my children graduated from the U of I. And so, we really like it here. And so, when I heard about 5G, I was watching the council on TV, and I was all excited, and then didn't pay any attention, and then I saw that the governor had passed a law saying that the telecommunications corporations had, you know, could override the city on what they charged for the implementation. So I thought, if the bipartisan, you know, if our assembly could come together and sign a bill and pass it, there must be something going on. So, I did a little research, and I came up with some questions. And so, I just thought, you know, I -- nobody I could -- I talked to in the city, you know, when I went grocery shopping or talked to neighbors or anything, nobody knew anything about it. You know, arborists, you know, people out working, anything. So, I did go around and ask some people in the city and stuff, and I found that Brad Bennett is working on it and a contract, but he was out today, so I didn't get a chance to talk to him. So I don't want to blindside him. My major questions are, and I did some research on the internet and found out there are two -- I'm going to have to read this because it was very fast research, and this is where a little knowledge is the dangerous thing. There are some -- two standards, global standards creating agencies. One is 3GPP, and that's been around since the beginning of the internet, and there's one called IEEE. And mostly, the people who go to those conferences are China and our military first responders, telecom companies, software companies who are selling software to all the nations around the world, software security companies who want to keep those software companies from letting their backdoors be hacked. As we all know, those software companies don't really care about whether that happens or not. Anyway, so, it's great that you can go online and you can see the standards and the ones that they let you see. So anyway, my questions are things like, how will the ordinary person in Urbana find out how it's going to be implemented, and will there be a map, and will we get to see how high the poles are and where the poles will be located, whether it's in your neighborhood or on a light pole or on an electricity pole, and will you get to vote on it or have any input at all, and how long will that be, if so, before that happens? Will certain neighborhoods have it happen first? Will those be low income or not? If it's an easement in your backyard, will that happen, or will it only be in the front yards? Will schools, hospitals, or parks be treated differently? Is it actually true that you need a clear line of sight, cutting trees, moving transmitters around buildings? What else? Is it actually true that you need a clear line of sight to get these radio waves to work? Because if they're in the same broadband as radios, that doesn't seem to have to be a problem for radio. 4G is 3.5 gigahertz. 5G will be 28 to 90 gigahertz. Will we have any control over what gigahertz they stay in? Chicago just did a test, didn't go that well. There hasn't been a lot of testing in the US. Are we the testing ground, essentially? Some cities are suing. They're suing for a variety of reasons. So I guess it would be nice to have all this out there so that we know ahead of time, as citizens, what's going on. And, you know, I have lots of questions. Some of them are probably easily answerable, and some of them not so much, but then if we know, we won't get upset. Some of these things we might be happy about. There you go.
Would you like to?
Yeah, I would -- I'm going to give you my card. I'm the city administrator. And if you would send me the list of questions, I'll work with Brad and others to get the questions answered for you, and then we can post them on the website someplace for everybody to take a look at.
Okay.
You can tell by the stunned look on our faces, we really don't know the answers yet, so. But we'll get you the best information we can.
You know, if I knew the answers, I would tell you. So, thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Does anyone else wish to address the city council? All right. Is there any -- no, there's no unfinished business. Reports of the committee of the whole. Eric?
Okay, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I bring to you Resolution Number 2019-04-005R, Resolution Approving the Transfer of Volume Caps in Connection with Private Activity Bond Issues and Related Matters. And this comes to you from the committee of the whole with a recommendation for approval.
And I'd second that.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Hershey.
Here. Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Here, yes.
Roberts?
Also here and yes.
Whoa.
Yes, here.
I see you guys are -- okay.
And for information, for the record, this -- that first resolution was with respect to the assist program. Now I bring to you Resolution Number 2019-04-006R, Resolution Approving the Transfer of Volume Caps in Connection with Private Activity Bond Issues and Related Matters. This with reference to the Illinois Housing Development Authority, Series 2019, and this comes to you with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion?
Me.
Dennis.
I'd just like to say that, for those who are tracking this, by releasing the bond cap and surrendering it to these organizations, it allows them to fill some of the goals that we have for community assistance programs that we wouldn't necessarily be able to do ourselves. So, this is a positive thing for the community and not a loss to the city.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Hershey.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
And I now bring to you --
That motion passes.
Motion passes. And I now bring to you Resolution Number 2019-04-007R, Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, specifically Rosa Grant's TBRA fiscal year 2018-2019. This comes to you with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Hershey.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Eric. Reports of special committees. Dennis?
Yeah, I'd just like to announce that the Urbana's Sister City Program will be meeting Wednesday evening at 5:30 at Strawberry Fields Cafe here in town. We had a booth at World Water Day on the Illinois Engineering Campus, and we met quite a few people who expressed an interest in our program. Many of them are foreign students who are attending the University of Illinois, and some of them were interested in coming to our next meeting. Some of the Chinese students were interested in our Chinese sister city, which is Guangzhou in China, and others were interested in the African sister city of Zomba, Malawi. Our meeting will discuss plans that we're preparing now for traveling to France in November. We've been invited by the mayor of Tiangvill, our sister city, to attend a celebration of -- that they've held occasionally, and this is the 75th anniversary of the liberation of their community from occupation during World War II. So, we'll be talking about future planning in that area at this meeting. So, 5:30 at Strawberry Fields Cafe. Anybody can come and attend.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Reports of officers. Libby Horowitz, Economic Development.
Good evening. Libby Horowitz, Economic Development Coordinator with the Business and Development Report for March. I'll start off with two new businesses that opened. First, the Analog Wine Library, which opened at 129 North Race Street. They will offer wine tastings as well as wine by the glass. You can also buy a bottle to take home. Scrubs and Cuts opened at Sunnycrest on Philo. They are a pet washing and grooming business owned by two twin sisters. They received the first Philo business opening grant that was created in 2018. Two permit updates, two large permit updates. The permit for the new Culvers at University and Race has been issued. That's a $1.1 million project. Also, O'Reilly's Auto Parts. They had been looking in the area to find a location, and they applied for a permit to remodel the 1208 Cunningham. In other news, Urbana Arts Grants. That process has completed. The City World Award over -- around $80,000 to a diverse set of 30 projects. There are two ways that you can find out about those recipients. You can go to urbanaillinois.us/artsgrants. And I would encourage everyone to go tomorrow, April 16th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Blackbird. There is going to be the sneak peek, which will be a presentation of all of the recipients. Also of note is May 5th will be the first market of the square. It'll be May the 4th, I think it's May 4th, I apologize. May the 4th be with you.
[laughing]
So, May 4th, yes. Thank you.
Any questions for Libby?
May the 4th be with you, too.
Any other officer reports? Okay. We'll move on to new business. First up is Ordnance 2019-04-024, which is an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for planned unit development at 1007 to 1011 West University Avenue. Chris Saunders project, planned case 2373, PUD 19. Also, the related ordinance 2019-04-025, which is the ordinance approving a final development plan. So as I said, we will be discussing these tonight, but no action will be taken tonight. And we have a presentation by Kevin Garcia.
Okay, good evening. I'll try to be pretty, you know, run through this pretty quickly, but I do want to, you know, do want to be thorough as well, so please bear with me. So this is for preliminary and final approval of a mixed-use planned unit development. This is on the Nero Zero site, which is on University just across from Campus Circle. And it's also the adjacent site to the west on the corner of Harvey and University, which is a parking lot. The proposal is for a five-story building, as you can see in front of you. This would be one story of commercial on the first floor. There's also parking behind that that you can't see from this, the university side. And then also, four stories of residential above that. There are 76 apartments proposed with 124 bedrooms. Previously, and let me skip all the way towards the end here, previously, there was a special use permit. I don't actually have that in here. In your packet, there is a -- there is a site plan for the previously approved special use permit, which was back in 2018, and it was for a mixed-use building on the site. But in that proposal, the building was pushed all the way to the south side of the site. There was a parking lot in front of the building along University Avenue. And the current proposal is really a much more cohesive development that, as I said, it goes over two sites. So, the previous special use permit only covered the Nero Zero site. Since that was approved, Chris Saunders, who's the applicant, he purchased the site on the corner at Harvey, so he's able to create a more cohesive development rather than just leave a parking lot there, as in the previous proposal. So access to this site would be off of Harvey, off of Harvey, and then an alley in the back there on the south side. This building would be 62 feet tall, which is the same as Campus Circle, which is, as I mentioned, is directly across the street as well. In planned unit development cases, applicants can ask for waivers, and in this case, they're asking for parking and -- or for reduced parking and reduced setbacks, which I'll describe in a little bit. Just for some context, here's some site photos of what currently exists. So this is looking at the former university-owned parking lot on Harvey and University. You can see the alley there. It's not in great condition, which, as I mentioned, the applicant would -- would, or maybe I didn't mention, but the applicant does -- will repave that, reconstruct that alley to city standards. This is looking north across that parking lot towards Campus Circle. This is looking southeast across the site. You'll note that south of the property, there are three or three and a half story apartment buildings there as well. This is looking west at what is currently an entire block of university parking lot, but which is slated in the university's comprehensive plan to be a medical enterprise institute. So that's planned to be in the -- it's in the long-range plan, so probably 10 or more years down the road, I would think, but there would be a five to six-story building here with medical-type university uses. This is looking east along the sidewalk across that parking lot, lot towards Nero's. I do want to point out, while we're looking down here, that the Illinois Department of Transportation is investing millions of dollars in sidewalk improvements and improvements to crosswalks and lighting, or sorry, and street -- sorry, stoplights to make the university corridor safer for people walking, for people biking. So that will occur along here as well. Here's the Nero site, if you're unfamiliar with it. And then just for context, I went across the street to Campus Circle. I stood about five feet away from the building because I wanted to see what it felt like to be standing next to a five-story building. And it didn't really feel like you're standing next to a five-story building, because they do a good job. They have some awnings and things that make it feel like you're standing next to a smaller building. And I do want to point out that, so if you look on the renderings here, you'll see similar awnings, so at the corner, at the corner of Harvey and University and in front of the store here. So it shouldn't feel like, if you're walking by it, like you're walking by a really tall building. Site surrounded by mostly commercial uses, except to the west is the -- is all university-owned. So this property is the furthest west property you can get on University Avenue. That's closest to the university. I didn't state that very clearly, but I hope you get my gist. To the south are high-density apartments. So we really feel that the mixed use of commercial and high-density apartments is appropriate for the site. Zoning, mostly along University. It's mostly B3, which is general business. To the south is B3U, which is general business university. So that's the zone that's supposed to create more of a mixed use, a mixed use zone catering to university. And then, you know, to the west, there's some B3 and residential uses, but basically, anything to the west and to the south is university, so that's kind of its own thing. On the future land use map, you'll notice this. This area is identified as campus mixed use. And under -- I did some quick analysis, and under the current zoning, it would be pretty much impossible to develop this site or the adjacent sites as mixed-use sites because of the parking requirements that we have. So, for example, if you were to develop the Taco Bell site, which is right just to the east of this site, if you wanted to have, say, a Taco Bell of the same size on that site, but also have other uses, so put some apartments, let's say. Let's say you built a new building to those specifications. Currently, the site has, it's mostly parking, if you're familiar with the site. So it's mostly parking, and it's got the Taco Bell there. There are only five extra parking spaces beyond what our zoning ordinance requires. So, if you tried to do a mixed-use building there, you would have all of five park -- extra parking spaces to work with, which means you really couldn't do a mixed-use building there. Same goes with the Dairy Queen further east, except -- so that's the one, the next, the next building to the east, except the Dairy Queen has no access parking, so you really couldn't do a mixed-use building on that site. Same goes for the Nero site, which, my analysis, I was just looking at the Nero site, but the Nero site only has three excess parking spaces. So, you know, if you follow my previous logic, that's not really, you know, much you can do mixed-use-wise. So, all that is to say, this area is identified as campus mixed use in the Urbana Comprehensive Plan, but you really can't do mixed use there without some sort of waiver for parking, at the very least. Speaking of campus mixed use, the comprehensive plan identifies mixed use as urban-designed mixed-use buildings, which include business office on the ground floor and residential on the upper floors. Developments consisting of only multifamily are discouraged. This proposal meets that statement of the desire for campus mixed use pretty much. of the desire for campus mixed use pretty much to a T. Okay, so, one thing we look for in planned unit development cases are consistency with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go through all of those for the sake of time, but starting on page three and taking up most of page four are goals that staff feels are met by this proposal. In addition to the comp plan goals, the, there are specific planned unit development goals from section 13.3 of the Urbana zoning ordinance. And we feel that, that this development meets seven out of the nine goals. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I do want to read them, read the seven that they meet just briefly because I think it's important. So number one is to encourage high-quality, non-traditional, mixed-use and/or conservation development in areas identified in the comprehensive plan. Number two is to promote infill development in a manner consistent with the surrounding area. Number three is to promote flexibility and subdivision and development design where necessary. Number four is to provide public amenities not typically promoted by the zoning ordinance. Number five is to promote development that is significantly responsive to the goals, objectives, and future land uses of the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. Number six is to provide a higher level of street and pedestrian connectivity within the development and the surrounding neighborhood in accordance with the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. And number seven is to coordinate architectural styles, building forms, and building relationships within the development and the surrounding neighborhood. Those are the seven PUD goals out of nine that we feel this development meets. Also, to be eligible for a planned unit development, a, a proposal has to meet at least one of three, one of, excuse me, four eligibility criteria. And this proposal meets three out of the four, those being mixed use, infill, and a unique development. I may have mentioned this earlier, but really, the, the purpose of planned unit developments are to provide developers with zoning flexibility in exchange for a higher-quality development than we would normally see in a by-right type of development. So that's why there are very specific goals in the plant, in the PUD ordinance. And there are other recommendations in that section that sort of set a high bar for, for development. So I do think, in this case, the, the proposal meets, meets a lot of those. Meets a lot of those. I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute. But first, I want to talk about the flexibility or the waivers that are being requested here. So there are two requests. One is to reduce the parking. And if, so if this were a by-right, the proposed development would require at least 87 parking spaces, which I don't think you could physically fit on this site and still build anything on. The proposal provides 33 parking spaces, so that's a reduction of just over 60%. And while that seems like a large reduction, in student-oriented developments, we have seen reduced demand. You may recall, in 2017, staff did a, a survey and a study of multifamily parking, mostly in west, west Urbana, sort of near, near campus. And we found in that study that there was a reduced demand for, for apartments near campus. Also, the, Mr. Saunders provided data from 14 of his, or of properties that Green Street Realty owns, which is in Exhibit F of your staff memo. I mean, there's really, it's a mixture of newer and older buildings. Many of them are in Champaign, but there are a few in Urbana. So they're all built under different regulations, different parking regulations. But one thing is clear when you look at the data, and that's that none of the apartments have demand that even is close to one space for every two bedrooms, which is the minimum of what Urbana requires for apartments. This property is right across the street from the university, so we would expect that fewer residents will need to, to drive. So we feel that this request is warranted. The second waiver request is for reduced setbacks. And their request is to, let me go to the site plan here. So their request is to reduce the setbacks. This might show it a little bit clearer. So this would reduce the setbacks on University and, and Harvey from 15 feet to five feet at its minimum. You see, the building is kind of articulated, so, you know, that five-foot setback is only for roughly 30% of it. And then reduce the, the side yard, which is what Mulberry Avenue, or, sorry, Mulberry Alley is, down to about five and three-quarters inches from five feet. And then on the east side, to reduce from, actually, sorry, the south side is, is supposed to be 11.1 feet because there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that requires a further setback. And the same provision applies to the east side. So the, the required setback here would be 21.1 feet, and it's reduced to 12 feet 9 inches. Given the surrounding land uses with high-density apartment buildings on both the south and the north, and then the, the Taco Bell to the east, we really don't feel that the reduced setbacks would harm, you know, would, would cause a nuisance to adjacent properties. Most of the time, setbacks are in place to prevent, say, a really tall apartment building from shading a single-family residence. And we don't have those in this area, so we don't think it would create a nuisance. As for public benefits, that, that the developer would be providing in this request, as I mentioned before, they would pay to reconstruct the alley, the entire distance along, along the southern property line. So that is a cost that the city would not have to bear. Not only would that save the city money, it would also be beneficial to the apartment buildings to the south, which take their access off of that alley as well. In the special use permit case from a year and a half ago, the only person from the public that came to speak was the owner of, of the apartment building on Harvey Street just to the south. And they said they had no problem with the proposal, but they did have concerns with the alley because it was in such bad shape. The other public benefits, which I actually haven't touched on yet, but if you look at, so if you look at the existing site right here, you see that there's access, there's a driveway coming off of Harvey Street, and there are two driveways coming off of University Avenue. And then the proposal would close both driveways along University Avenue. It would also shift the driveway on Harvey Street to the south. So especially given the work that IDOT is doing to improve the sidewalks and safety for people walking along University Avenue, closing those two driveways will really make it a better environment for people walking, who are walking. And it would also make it safer because you don't have to contend with, with those driveways to cross. Also, shifting the driveway along Harvey Street to the south is beneficial. It's always good to have driveways as far from intersections as you can get. So it would shift it from the University Avenue side south towards the alley, which gets much less traffic than University Avenue. I did want to touch on some recommended, recommended design features. And these are on page, so the PUD ordinance has some criteria, which start on page nine and go through page 10. I'm only going to touch on number five, which is on page 10, which talks about recommended design features that are suggested by the PUD ordinance. The first is architectural design. And so the building's design features reflect the following PUD goals: architectural consistency, identity and design, openings, exterior surfaces, the building-street relationship, garages, and materials. Number two is access. I just talked about the benefits of access, so I won't go through those again. Number three is bicycle parking. And so the, the bicycle parking identified in the, oh, do I? I have an updated, I think I have an updated plan. Oh, yeah, here we go. So the, the bike parking on the site plan, so that it includes long-term bike parking in this area in the middle, which is under the building, which will be covered. And the applicant has, has agreed to make that secured, like a locked fenced area. So if you live there, you can have a secure place out of the elements to park your bike. Also, they've identified a few other areas which are, are on the site plan and this little wavy, these wavy areas that could also be used for, for short-term bike parking. So if you're coming to visit somebody who lives there or you're going to the, the retail space, there could be parking in those areas that would also be covered, but it would be short-term, so you can get in and get out easily. So that's pretty high-quality, high-quality bike parking that's not typically required by the zoning ordinance. Number four, there is a provision in the PUD section that talks about maximum parking. And it allows for, for parking to be based on observed data from similar projects. And the applicant has provided data from similar student-oriented projects in Urbana and Champaign, which again is in Exhibit F. And finally, rear parking, which I haven't talked about too much, but it is nice to see parking, and the PUD ordinance reflects that. Parking that's located away from the street, so there's not a parking lot right next to the street, which is really just a better design if you're walking by, if you're driving by. Just aesthetically, it's a lot better. So just to conclude, I know that was a lot, a lot of stuff that I just talked about, so thanks for bearing with me. But there is a lot to cover with planned unit development, so we want to do, do it justice when someone comes in with a planned unit development proposal. We think this is a great development. Staff thinks this is a, this is a great development, that it really exemplifies what the PUD ordinance was written for, what, what the goals of that ordinance are, are all about. The Plan Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the planned unit development with conditions, which I'll read briefly. And then I did want to make a note, which is in a footnote on your memo. So number one is that construction be in general conformance with the site plan and elevations in ordinance attachment A. Number two, that the applicant will reconstruct the alley on the south side of the parcels to city standards. And that the bicycle parking area under the building will be fenced and secured. Now regarding the, the first recommended condition, the Plan Commission had noticed that initially, in the plans, they saw this area that's 789 square feet that's in, on the northwest corner of the building, that's identified, that was identified as amenity space, so space for the residents of the apartments. But the Plan Commission wanted to add flexibility to allow that space to be used for something else should the need arise. So if the, if for whatever reason, it would work better as retail or office or a restaurant space, they wanted to add flexibility. So they had added some suggested language to condition one. But rather than add language to a condition, we thought it would be an easier, an easier thing to do to just identify that area as amenity or retail or office or restaurant space, as you see now in the site plan and in the site plan that we've attached in the draft ordinance. So that concludes my report, and I can take questions.
Any technical questions for Kevin? And Mr. Saunders is here with us tonight, so I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions you have as well. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you very much. Really, the only question I had asked, and I actually sent it to you a little bit earlier today, was concerning the setbacks. And it's not that I, I don't understand the, the ability to work with setbacks in a PUD environment for design. I guess my question to you and maybe just to the council in general is, as we develop, as we see development occurring now along University Avenue, and we expect to see other underused sites coming before us in the future, do we have an ability to maintain what would be a very comfortable pedestrian-based setback for the building so that we're allowing for a sidewalk and parkway, which would include perhaps planting trees or something along the street side as we see these developments coming for us? So when we only have a, in some respect, in some respects, this design kind of eases that question for me because there are three different facade levels, which go from five feet from the edge of the sidewalk, as it currently is, to even 10 feet and some inches, six or eight, I can't remember what it is. So there is some variety, and there's some greater depth allowed. But I guess my concern is to, to not create for Urbana, for University Avenue in Urbana, a, a street that is so, where the facades abut the curb to such a degree that it feels uncomfortable to be on the sidewalk and to disallow the possible of tree-scaping along the street, which I think would be, would, would be a handsome addition to our concept of what University Avenue is in Urbana. And I want to, you know, say that a lot of people have commented how very attractive the, you know, the university has treated some of the buildings farther to the west in Champaign with, you know, a level of tree-scaping in front of the buildings. So I'm guessing that in this instance, we're not really having too much leeway because of the PUD requirements in the request. But in the future, are we going to be able to have some kind of conversation to maintain a 15-foot front yard setback along the street? Or will this be difficult to maintain?
Well, the, the underlying zoning, as I pointed out, along University Avenue is mostly B3. So it does have a 15-foot setback requirement. So anything that goes in by right would have to meet that 15-foot setback. So the only way, the only way to get past that would be more planned unit developments or zoning variances. So I think on the books right now, we have that setback. That setback will be maintained unless somebody comes in with a, with another PUD or, or variance request. And then I think that's just taken on an ad hoc basis.
Okay, and can you tell me, with the proposed redevelopment or re-upgrade of University Avenue, and I haven't released, I don't remember seeing final plans for that. I think we've seen preliminary plans, but we haven't seen any kind of final drafting plans for our section of it. Will there be a loss of parkway in that project? And will, will, will our sidewalk eventually be curbside? I find that, that for pedestrians walking next to such a busy street as this, having those sections of the street where the curb is right and the sidewalk meet, you know, in line, becomes, it feels very dangerous to be so close to the traffic. And having a few feet of green space really makes a huge difference to the perception of our community members for safety. So, and it also allows possibly a planting of a tree along the- So, and it also allows possibly a planting of a tree along the street. So do you know whether we're going to be having a reconfiguration and perhaps a loss of green, of parkway in this reconfiguration? If there are expansions, bike lanes or bus pullouts?
It's been a while since I've looked at the final plans, and we can get those to you, so you can, you can look at them, you know, we can all look at them and see what's proposed. But it's my recollection that there's not going to be a loss of parkway space. That's one reason why, and I didn't mention this, but for example, on this property, IDOT purchased an additional, I think, one foot, seven inches on the northern half of the property, so this property shrunk by a foot and a half, so that they could have additional right-of-way to widen sidewalks and do their project. I think from a safety perspective, you wouldn't want to see the sidewalk closer to University Avenue. So I don't think that that's what they're doing anywhere, but we can make sure of that.
So I guess, I guess my concern is that the footprint that we see today might, the placement of the sidewalk might be altered in some way by the, by the reconfiguration of, the future reconfiguration along University Avenue, and I'm just wondering if that's true or not.
It may be. These, so the property lines here reflect the current property lines after the IDOT purchase. So there is a little bit of space between the sidewalk and the property line, so I imagine they might have, or that might be where they widen the sidewalk. But I don't want to speak for plans that I haven't looked at in months, so.
Sure, right. I appreciate that. And I don't know if anybody else has that concern, but I think for me, it's, you know, I would like to, I would like to maintain University Avenue as a beautiful avenue, and I don't find that I feel that way when I, when I go across Wright Street and I see the, you know, was it the Legend buildings that are, the tall apartment buildings that are hunkering, hunkering right against the sidewalk?
On the north side?
On the north side, yeah.
Latitude.
Latitude, not Legend, latitude, thank you.
And that, that property was actually done as a by-right development when it was built?
For them, yeah.
With zero setback.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's one thing that I'm hoping we don't have to deal with in the future in our community.
Mary Alice?
So my question, I just want to reiterate for, because I struggled a little bit with this, and Dennis mentioned it in terms of the setback. It is at the property line, and the property line is actually on the south side of the sidewalk here. So the five-foot measurement really is not from the curb, not from the sidewalk, it is from the south side of the sidewalk. Is that, that's correct, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, really, there is more than five feet from the building to the curb.
Oh, absolutely.
To the actual curb.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so we're not like just abutting at five feet from the street. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear about that. The second thing that, so yesterday, I walked around this block and I walked around the other block, and I was over at the circle, and so they have a really wide sidewalk, or that really wide, it looks like double the size. So I was trying to figure out, okay, well, if it's double the size, and do you know what the setback is for the circle?
Yeah, that's 15 feet, and most of that sidewalk is private sidewalk that they installed themselves.
So the setback starts at that private sidewalk, I assume?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if, you know, in that picture, I'm not sure if you can really...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think it's right here.
Okay, all right, that makes sense, because that is very big. So the other building that's just about a block away from this is, I call it the Bagel Building, the Einstein Bagel Building on the corner.
Yeah, I call it that, too.
So that one's very interesting in terms of the setback. I mean, like, at some points, it seemed like there's no setback from the sidewalk. Did that have a variance? Or when that building was built, was it a PUD? What was, what was the situation there?
I don't think it was a PUD, and I'm not sure, I'll have to look into what, if there were any cases, you know, if there was a variance request or anything.
I would be interested in learning that, because it was, it was very odd. I mean, it just kind of curves and so forth. And then my second question had to do with the setback on the backyard. So if I remember what you said, did you say five inches from the parking lot? Is that right?
Yeah, it was.
Property line to parking lot?
Five and three-quarters inches.
Inches, okay. So if we're talking inches...
Yeah.
Are there requirements in the back for screening? I guess there can't be, there can't be, unless you have a fence there, you can't fit a bush.
Right, right. It's multifamily against multifamily, so there's no setback required there.
No setback or no screening?
Sorry, both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, there's a setback. There's, yeah, there's no screening required, no landscaping required.
Okay, all right. And so those are my technical questions for now. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You asked everything I wanted to ask.
Jared?
I didn't have another question, but I did want to reiterate since Dennis mentioned that I did, I was going to ask the same question about what the planned improvements with the University Avenue were going to be and how that would affect that sidewalk right there, so.
Yeah, and I can share those with you or Brad in Public Works. I think he's got those plans. That's something that council should, should look at.
Sure, it'd be good to see him before we, this comes back.
If you could share them also when we talk about it next week.
Yes, yeah.
Eric?
Yeah, I'd be surprised, but I guess we'll see that if there's any projected need to widen University Avenue, because at that point, I think it's plenty wide. And actually, I have sort of an inverse concern, because the traffic goes through there really fast. And I wonder if we're looking to have restaurant, other retail, right on University Avenue at that point. I'm speaking now not out of knowledge, but sort of out of instinct. I think what you want is, you want to be on a well-traveled street, but you also don't want to be on a street where stuff is moving so fast that if somebody slows down to turn into your business, that somebody else is going to run up their backside. And so I would see, the concern that I would have about University Avenue, if this goes in, and I hope it will, is that, is whether there's going to be some need for traffic calming in some way on University Avenue.
One thing we don't, we don't talk about too often is the effect that, that a narrowing of your vision as you're, say, driving down the street, that psychologically actually reduces speeds. So if you have a five-story building here, a five-story building here, it kind of narrows your field of vision and should reduce speeds, just, you know, if you're driving, you'll feel more comfortable driving, or sorry, you'll feel less comfortable driving fast. I don't know that there's, I don't think there's any plans to widen the street there, which makes, makes people want to drive faster. But I guess, again, stay tuned on those final plans.
Jared?
Were we expecting to hear from Chris about this? Because I have questions for Chris.
Sure, if you have questions for Chris, I'm sure he'd be happy to come up. Sharice, did you have a comment or question?
Well, one of the things I wanted to know because of what Eric was talking about, where traffic is concerned, I could see a big pedestrian problem here, mainly, well, because of University Avenue, are there any, is there any kind of plant, plan at all that, because you have so many students and there's Hot Walk, and there is the Burger King across the, next to the Hot Walk, and is there any, any kind of plan or any kind of way to make this area, this particular corner, at least to somewhat more pedestrian-friendly?
For crossing University Avenue, I think it would be tough. And I don't, I guess, again, when we see IDOT's final plans, we'll see if they have anything in there. I don't recall anything in there. I think they would...
Because otherwise, you have to go all the way down to Lincoln to cross the street, or you gotta go, what, down on Goodwin?
Yeah.
To cross the street. And having been a University of Illinois student myself, we don't know what streets are. Going, going across the, doing that, you know, you want to get to where you want to get to, and that's it. And this is not, yeah, it's just something that I think, when you are putting another development up, it's something, especially on this kind of thoroughfare, University Avenue, it's something that needs to be taken into consideration, even if you have to do a walk up and cross above and walk back, you know, or something, but there has to be some kind of safety, I think, something to help, to prevent those types of, because that's going to happen. I see that, this is plain, as if, I can see just something like that happening, and it would be a real problem.
Well, we do know that the University Avenue project is focused on pedestrian safety, and it's in response to a couple of tragic accidents on University. So everything they're going to do is focused on the pedestrian experience, and that was the motivation behind this entire project, actually. So there may, we'll find out what they have for this particular intersection, but the overall project is focused on pedestrian safety, which is a good thing because of the increased population.
Yeah, because there's more traffic, you know, going down University, it's ridiculous. And I can just see there being an issue, because people don't want to go down to Lincoln and wait five minutes for the light to change, to do that, and same thing with Goodwin. And you have that issue, that whole area in between those, those two streets where there's nothing, to help the pedestrian go from somewhere in between to the other somewhere in between on the north side. So just something to consider when you're doing this.
I know that staff in discussions with IDOT had asked if there could be some sort of mid-block crossing in this area, I think because of campus circle apartments being right there. And that's just not in the plans right now, from what I recall, but we can look at those final plans again. One point about this, this site is that it is on the, on the correct side of University for, you know, because most of the walking is going to be south and west to the university, but certainly some people will cross to the north side.
Yeah, because I go down Goodwin a lot and going on to, to just wherever I have to go, library usually. And university students act like my car is not even there. And that's, that's on the north side of University. They'll just walk on, several times, and I've waited for the light, just, you know, okay, baby, get across the street, because they just, they're oblivious. So I really want that, that little euphoria that they're having with their iPods to not interfere with their health, you know, because they're not paying attention. So it's something that I do worry about.
Yeah. Jared, you have questions?
Yeah, how you doing, Chris?
Good, I'm good, good, thanks.
Good to see you again so soon.
Yeah, back again.
I got two questions, and both of them concern Nero's Euros. I know when we had first discussed this site prior, I think you had mentioned something about giving them priority first right refusal or something to that planned bottom commercial space so that they wouldn't lose their location. Is that still up in play for this? Or have they decided that they're not going to pursue continuing at that location?
No, we just answered that. We haven't really got deep into that yet, since we're in the approval stage. But the plan before, if you remember, we didn't have the adjoining lot, the university owned that, and actually, I walked out of the meeting and they approached me and said, we do want to sell it to you, after I'd been trying to buy it for a period of time, which was great. So it kind of put the whole plan on hold, and I think we all agreed that it just didn't look quite right without that corner. It just makes it a lot better project, no matter what you put there. So we had a design before as this drive-through, and it really started creating a lot of problems. And most of the feedback I had was, get this thing towards the street, like the building on the corner. Everybody likes the bagel shop building, get it up there, get it off a little bit, but, and that's, that's really kind of what we did. And since that time, if, as you guys would know, we've got some pretty substantial-sized projects that are about three times larger than this one, that are approved on the corner, the Gather Project and the landmark project, the Retreat. So that puts almost 1,700 people within a block and a half of here. And what I, what we thought we wanted to design was more of a pedestrian-friendly, walkable type development. We think the retail is actually going to do very well here, but a retailer that needs to have a ton of parking or is a big restaurant user likely is not going to pick this spot. There's plenty of other spots you can go that have, that meet those requirements. The, a lot of retailers are super-specific on what they want. And we think, we're going to try to twist Nero's arm, that we think they can work without a drive-through here, with the amount of traffic and the amount of people that are coming to this area that are walkable. They've already got a reputation there. So that's going to be our play with them, but we expect to see, we're planning this space to have one restaurant-type user, likely a, just like they've got at the Bagelman's, more of a, you know, you walk in, order, walk out type of deal, Einstein, the Einstein guy, sorry, Mark. But yeah, same kind of deal. I don't think you're going to see this where it's going to be, you know, some sit-down type restaurant that has tons of parking demand and no place to park. So, and we think it might be an office user. There are several, as you know, hospitals nearby, OSF and Carl. We think that's also a tenant-type demand. We're building these as 36-ones, 36-twos, and just four bedrooms. So we do think it's going to be students, but I don't think it's going to be only students. We see down at 209 University, which is a very similar location in Champaign, it's 129 beds with about 12,000 feet of retail, 33 parking spaces that we built last year. We get a mix of people that work downtown along University Avenue that aren't students. So we like it because it's got a nice mix, but I think it's going to be a, we want it to be pedestrian-friendly, we want it to tie together with the street. To answer your questions, we did have, we sold that little piece to IDOT along their, we did use their plans when we designed this with our setbacks and stuff, so we are already accounting for that in there. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think, I think they're widening the sidewalks. I could certainly, that stuff is readily available to get over to Kevin and his team if, I'm sure they can get it as well, so. But I think, yeah, it's going to improve the area, and as we know, that's going to have to be a more walkable type environment. And I think that we find that the residents here are going to be residents that if parking, you know, it's parking to keep your car mostly, you might leave on the weekends and go somewhere around town or have a part-time job, but we think most of the people in this location are going to be walkers, bikers. It's just too hard to park on campus, there just isn't places to park. And this is so close to everything that we think it'll be a very popular location.
Oh, thanks for the answers. One other, because obviously, there is no drive-through in this one, so that stood out to me in the, in the difference between those. So the other question is that, assuming none of this parking is going to be available to the public, this is all going to be for residents?
We plan on carving some space out for the retail tenants that are there. We believe that there's enough surrounding parking, university-owned or private, that if, and this goes back to the same thing with demand, if somebody is just, has to have parking, it's their most important thing, and we're out of spaces, they've got plenty of other options within the median area, including across the street, that might end up being more attractive. Or they may find they just sign a parking lease with one of those groups, because most of the cars are being stayed. So we don't, I don't anticipate parking, residential parking being a huge, huge issue here, we'll probably carve out a certain number of, maybe that's 10 to 20% for retail users, so people that work there can park. But yeah, we're not going to, you know, we may have a few spots near the back, so if you have a customer come in, type of deal, and have it marked for customer parking for the retail. But we have not quite got that far yet. But obviously, without going above ground or below ground with additional parking, which wasn't feasible on this, on this site, we can kind of get what we can get on the ground, and that's kind of where we came up with this. We also, after reviewing this with the city staff, we actually had a couple more parking spaces, but I think the general consensus after our last meeting was, let's make the retail a little more, if you're already going to lose this much parking, let's make the retail a little bit wider, a little bit more... retail a little bit wider, a little bit more usable. So, we, we went ahead and, I think you can see in the red, uh, area there, I don't know if, yeah, we, we made that a little bit deeper. So, it might be a little bit more, yeah, usable, commercial space, and we lost two parking spaces doing that.
Do you, uh, think that there might be consideration for leasing some of the spaces from Taco Bell to use for that as well?
We thought of that as well, because I think they've obviously got way more parking. They're, they're primarily a drive-through.
Right.
Type, uh, type, type location. Um, they've got a ton of parking, and that, that's absolutely been something that we're going to talk to. We've also talked to the university, obviously, as of now. They've got a giant surface parking lot that is available for U of I students to lease, along with a parking garage. Uh, and I think the groups, uh,
Oh, the one right across the street?
Yeah. So, several other groups, um, have approached us with additional parking, as we did kind of a parking study of our own, on how many spaces the, the bankier building behind it had, and some of the other Smith apartments that were there. So, there's more than happy owners that would probably lease additional space to either commercial tenants or, or residential tenants.
Thanks.
Yep.
I was just going to ask, um, will there be any, like, temporary parking on Harvey, uh, for, for example? Because, because of the fact, I know I've gone to Nero's Euros, and, um, yes, they've gotten most of their, they get most of their stuff through a drive-through, but they're also, they have a lot of walk-in clients. Um, for me, uh, I'm driving, so I just would park at the parking lot and go in and, you know, pick up what I wanted to pick up. So, will they, will, will there be any opportunity or any way to have, um, a temporary spot for that kind of thing, for a pickup order or, or anything like that, um, from Nero's?
Yeah, and I'm not familiar on Harvey if there's already, uh, meters there or not, either university or city meters, but, uh, that would be an option. I don't know how wide that street is either, so, um, I, I think, you know, we, we thought all along the idea of getting a, a parking agreement. We haven't went that far yet, but feel pretty confident we could probably strike a, strike a deal with, uh, as long as we're not putting a competing product in with Taco Bell. We, we feel like we could, uh, strike a deal there. We've had not conversations directly, but we have had conversations with some of the owners behind, in the buildings behind there. So, yeah, that's going to be important if, uh, you know, if you want to, if you're driving down the street and want to pull in and, uh, and get something where you can, we can park and where you can easily see that it's simple to park. So, we're working on that, but that's not a finalized deal right now. And we, we are eliminating the curb cuts, as Kevin said, along University Avenue. Uh, so that's going to, that's going to really drive people down that Harvey Street side, or into the Taco Bell side, if we can work out a, a parking agreement there.
Mary Alice?
Um, I just want to say thank you, because I was one of the people who was requesting the building to be pushed up to the street. I think it's a lot, um, a lot nicer. It, uh, certainly reflects a circle across the streets. I really, really like that you did that, so thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Um, the other thing that I really like, since I don't always say I like lots of things, so I'm going to say this. Um, I, I like the design in terms of the corners. So, I don't like it when there's a complete wall of brick or anything. So, I think articulating it in both of the corners makes it a much more, um, architecturally-nice building, so.
Yeah, we agree. And the LCM, uh, Chicago-based architect that we used on this, who we've used on several projects, uh, usually they put a proposal out, and we go back and forth on it for like a month or two, and they put this out, and I was like, done. We all went like, that's good, that's perfect. They, they had two, uh, color variations of it, and, uh, we liked this one a little bit better. It was, uh, but yeah, I think it's, I love the way it looks. I think it looks sharp. I think it looks the part. Um, you know, we have had some negotiations a little bit and some discussions with, uh, you know, a, a potential office user here, uh, that might be nearby. Um, so we, you know, we, we think this is going to be, I know one of the concerns last time was just having vacant retail space along the bottom, and I think, I think this is going to be very usable space for somebody to come in and, and use it. We want it that way. We expect it to be leased. Our, our numbers are based on that leasing. So, um, yeah, we're excited about it. We're excited about, uh, the improvements to University Avenue. I, I agree with everybody. It'd be great if we could get a crosswalk, you know, that's probably an IDOT, um, issue since it's going over their, their road there. But, yeah, I mean, as, as this area gets busier and busier with, with people and traffic, uh, it's the same situation as you go down in Champaign where, where Latitude's at. Um, we've got the property at Fifth and University and Third and University, and it's frightening to cross the street there. So, so hopefully there's, um, and people don't pay attention like they should, of course. Uh, but yeah, I, I don't know if there, I didn't see any IDOT plans, uh, other than what they presented to us here, but we obviously like the fact that we're on this side of the street, and we think that's going to be a selling point to people at the university that don't have to cross that crazy, crazy busy street there.
My final question is, um, if you were to approximate, I'm just kind of glancing at this, it looks to me to be about fifty percent brick and fifty percent windows and some kind of siding. Is that a good approximation?
That sounds about right. That's, I haven't done the exact numbers. The architects could do a little program.
I don't need exact, I'm just looking for rough numbers.
Yeah, that's probably right. It's a lot of brick, um, and, and good materials. So, we, you know, we're expecting it to be, there won't be vinyl on this. It's just going to be nice, solid materials. We plan to keep in the building. We're not really in the game of reselling them, although we could, you know, build it and sell it in the afternoon, probably, because there's buyers right now for this type of product. But, plan is to keep it, hold it. We love the location. It's, it's one of our best locations, uh, as far as the proximity to campus, you really can't get any closer than that. Um, we think, uh, we've looked at the university's kind of comprehensive plans as well with that lot next door. We expect that not to be a big old parking lot for, forever. So, um, we're excited by what might show up there. Um, we like the fact that it's not just students that might be interested in a building like this. We also like, as you head west, this is the first property you'll see as you enter, you know, Urbana from that side, and it's not going to be a big parking lot with a thousand-square-foot, one-story building. So, uh, I think it's going to be a huge improvement to the area, and I think you've got a nice little corridor that's getting, getting built there that's going to really make quite a, quite a statement as you drive in.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris? Dennis?
I guess I'm going to take an opportunity to channel Aaron Ammons.
Yeah.
And, uh, and recommend to you that, if you can, to employ, um, um, workers, either as contractors or subcontractors who are, um, from the, um,
Yes.
The, uh,
African-American contractors and, and.
That's right. Yeah, to be, to be precise. I was going to say, just, you know, just alternative.
Minority.
Minority groups, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think we're, we're doing that on the, the Vine Street project. We went, we've met and, uh, with a consultant, and, and obviously, we're, we're open to finding as many, uh, new contractors as we can. We have a significant amount of work, um, for our company, a lot of it here in this market, and, uh, we need more groups, uh, you know, that are willing, ready, capable, and, uh, we like diverse backgrounds. We don't self-perform any of the work. We're, uh, we're the, uh, we're kind of the construction management side. We, we subcontract everything. So, yeah, we're, we're hoping that, uh, this opens up more avenues, more groups for us to, uh, continue to use. We employ a lot of people, um, just in our, in our company, um, companies that I own, but we, we, we employ a very significant amount of subcontractors. So, we, we are very interested in who we have. And we do have, we meet some of that criteria already on a lot of our, a lot of our projects. We do have a mix of union, uh, and non-union, uh, groups that work for us, and I think a pretty diverse group overall.
While I have you.
Yeah.
In front of that microphone, you are also the developer for the Retreat?
Not the developer for the Treat. That's an out-of-town group called Landmark.
Okay, so that's Landmark.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, um, as far as Urbana goes, we have the 200 Vine project. We did the 809 Nevada project last year. This will be our third new, uh, project in Urbana, if this gets approved.
Okay, thank you.
Have a lot of existing stuff, but this is, as far as new goes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
So, um,
Do you have a motion?
Shall I make a motion then? All right, so, um, because it's, uh,
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Because it's, uh, of interest to the, uh, the council to, uh, provide an opportunity for us not only to, um, to, to debate in the public and to evaluate the, the projects that come before us from the Planning Commission, but also to allow the, the public to have the opportunity to, uh, assimilate the projects that are being brought forward that are, I would say, major developments in the community. Um, uh, the mayor's kindly offered to move the final decision voting to, uh, a special, um, city council meeting that's going to be next Monday night. So, I would like to move these two ordinances, number 2019-04-024 and 2019-04-025, which is approving a preliminary and a final development plan for the planned unit development at 1,007 and 1,011 West University Avenue to a special, um, uh, city council meeting, uh, in one week.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Is there a discussion? And I guess this would be the opportunity for discussion in general on the project, if you had more comments to make.
I, I could. I'd just like to say that I think this is probably one of the better, uh, projects that I've seen come forward, and, um, I, I think it's maybe a little bit, little bit of a, a more professional look than I was kind of hoping to get for our 200 block of Vine Street. I'm still a little disappointed about that one. But, um, that said, um, I think the materials are handsome, and I think the design is a, a good design for University Avenue. Uh, and I appreciate the fact that the, the additional lot that was to the west that was purchased by you, uh, actually ended up enhancing the entire project, not only its concept and looks, but its layout. So, appreciate that very much.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That passes. So, this will be considered at a special council meeting next Monday. Okay, next up is Resolution Number 2019-04-008R. It's a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. It's, uh, Champaign County ZBA 927 AM 19. This is one of those votes where the, uh, recommended action is to defeat this resolution, so it's always a little bit confusing, but we'll, we'll get through that. Kevin's going to present that again.
Yeah, I promise I will not talk as long as I did the last time.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a Champaign County rezoning case, um, and as the mayor just said, the city has the right to protest county rezoning cases within our one-and-a-half-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction by filing a protest, um, by the date that the case goes to the county board. Um, in this case, the applicant wants to build a multi-use development that would have, uh, self-storage warehouses, a business office, and a public recreational facility. Um, these uses, uh, would all be allowed by right in the County B4 zoning district, um, which is what the, uh, applicant is requesting the property be rezoned to. Um, it's currently ag-two. Um, this property is along Cunningham Avenue, and on the north side, it's, uh, Olympian Road. Okay, so if this property were rezoned to County B4, um, if it's ever annexed into the city, it would come into the city as B3 general business, which would be appropriate for this stretch of Cunningham Avenue. Uh, because of this, uh, Plan Commission unanimously recommended that council defeat a resolution of protest for this case. That concludes my report.
Are there questions for Kevin? Mary Alice?
I'm just curious, what's right across, uh, just to the west of, of that? It looks like it's, I don't know, is it industrial? What, what are those little?
Yeah, there's some business uses up there. I'm not sure of the exact, um, the exact uses, but there's, all of these parcels, I believe, are commercial.
And then, everything to the east and south of that, is that agricultural as well?
Yeah, that's all agriculture, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, one, one of the uses across the street to the west, I, I'm aware of, is, um, um, a storage facility, and they allow people to also, um, house their, um, motor vehicles that are the, um, uh, the larger, um, mobile home kind of, um, recreational vehicles there, to park there. So,
Okay.
It's, it's kind of an industrial use.
Thanks. Charlie, you had a comment?
I was just going to simply point out, there are two ways to do this. Uh, if you move the resolution as it's written, and you want to defeat it, you, you vote no, or you make a motion directly defeating it and you vote yes. So, it's, it's your choice. If you move the resolution as it's written, and you want to defeat the protest, you vote no.
I move we defeat this resolution, in the hopes that that will be the simpler path.
I second that.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice, so the correct vote there would be a yes vote. Any further discussion? Um, will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Hershey?
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is Ordnance 20-
May I, Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just interject here?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Um, so, from time to time, we get these, um, we get these opportunities to, um, protest or not on, um, Champaign County zoning ordinance cases. And for the, the number of times that we actually protest, which is very minimal, there, uh, there's a relatively large amount of staff time involved in preparing the case. It goes to the Planning Commission by ordinance, and then it comes to the council. And what we'd like to do is bring to you a more streamlined process that would, um, that would limit the, would, would eliminate the, um, Planning Commission's involvement, and would, um, have the mayor notifying the council of her intent, one way or the other, to protest or not with a short memo explaining it, and give the, the council some number of days to then, if you were, if you wanted the, the matter to be agendized, then you would have the opportunity to do that, rather than automatically going through this more time-consuming process. So, uh, and we have a couple of more of these coming forward, um, relatively soon, I think. So, we'd, we'd like to bring that to you. And, and I'm, I'm giving you an overview as opposed to a level of detail, but if anybody has a, a reaction to that that they want to share now, I'd be happy to hear it, or we can, we'll bring you the case, um, the ordinance amendments, um, in a few weeks.
I'm sorry, okay, just to clarify.
I'm out of order.
Sharice?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I'm trying to understand, so you said, rather than us get it in the packet be, uh, beforehand, before it comes in the packet or whatever, then the mayor would contact us one by one to discuss this with us?
No, um, but it, it would not go on the agenda automatically.
Okay.
Um, with, uh, the staff would write, would write a memo that would inform what action the mayor would intend to take, but she would put the council on notice of the action that she intended to take with a sufficient amount of information that you could either say, "I want that put on the agenda." It would take two council members to put, to then put it on the agenda, or you could just allow it to, to go forward with the mayor's recommendation. So, it eliminates, it eliminates staff time in taking the, the case to the Planning Commission and certain other notifications, and it, so it would save time for our volunteers on the Planning Commission and staff time, and council time ultimately.
And we have numbers on how many of these cases have actually come forward, and what very, very small percentage that have ever been protested. We'll bring all that.
Right.
This is just, this is just presenting this idea, and then we'll have a memo on this.
Yeah, if you have any initial reactions to it.
Mary Alice, do you have a question?
I, I think Eric was.
Oh, for me.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to, so by, our, well, I just want to clarify the legal situation. The procedure we go through now is defined by our ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so in order to change that, we would have a new ordinance or an amended ordinance governing this?
Correct, that's what we would be bringing for your consideration.
With more detail.
Um, I think that, just on the face of it, um, I would be more supportive of something that would bypass, not bypass, immediately, um, put these types of ordinances in front of city council and not through Planning Commission to save that time. But, um, I can envision sometimes, and honestly, I don't remember when we went through the nursing home, um, if we had any protest, but there was a lot of conversation around that, and I would rather, there are some council members, myself included, sometimes that don't check email as consistently. So, I think it would be, um, better for council to at least see it at council. it would be better for council to at least see it at council meeting, but save the time of the planning commission, so those are my two thoughts.
Well, and we can do that incrementally so that, you know, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, so I think that's a great suggestion. That would, that would be helpful in and of itself. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we are at ordinance twenty, number twenty nineteen zero four dash zero two six, which is an ordinance amending Urbana zoning ordinance to revise Articles two and five to amend definitions and regulations for daycare homes and facilities.
Hello, everybody.
This is Ms. Lily Welk, planner.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Mayor said, we're gonna talk a little bit about amending the zoning ordinance and how we handle daycare homes, daycare facilities. The first article that we would be touching is definitions. The Article two are definitions, Article four, the zoning ordinance, it breaks, currently has a definition for daycare home, a definition for daycare facility, and then we'd actually be changing, getting rid of the reference to nurseries, just as less people are using that terminology. And we'd be breaking the, the definition, break daycare homes into two definitions, one for children and one for adults. Kind of clears things up because there's statewide legislation for children and that has different impacts for adults. And then we'd be redefining the definitions of daycare facilities. We found that if we treated daycare facilities, if, as a, as currently it's treated, it would be a conditional use in residential zones, that that could be a, a home occupation if it met the criteria of a conditional use permit and was approved. If it did that, you know, we could adjust things and it would be the, very similar to how we handle them today, but kind of clearing things up that they could be a home occupation. So that kind of adjusts our home occupation regulations for, be a little bit closer to how people are using it. And then the second change for daycare homes that we are really looking at was Article five. In Article five, we adjusted the home occupation regulations and that's where you will see the home occupation regulations. We tried to make sure that they were better aligned with DCFS regulations. Currently, a person who'd be interested in having a daycare home, which there are many in, in Urbana, as they, they went online, they did all, everything that they needed to do for DCFS, they got their inspection, they met fairly stringent requirements for DCFS. When, if they did that, more than likely, they go to the city of Urbana and they get the, the important permit that they need to get here, which is a home occupation permit. The rules, our rules are, are pretty different than DCFS rules and they kind of contradict each other, so we felt like that was a little undue and we were trying to kind of match the two after evaluating what the impact to the neighborhood would be and, and would this be a, a nuisance. So with that, we changed the thing, changed the number of children allowed by the type of home occupation and then also allowed for exterior visibility for daycare homes. One of the requirements in DCFS that the children have, they have play equipment on the premise, and so that's actually explicitly not allowed for all home occupations currently in our zoning ordinance, so we, we are proposing changing that so daycare homes can have play equipment and home occupied, daycare home occupation related equipment in their yard. And so, you know, the two, if you're gonna follow the city of Urbana and follow DCFS, really, you'd have to do quite a balancing act, if allowed. And then the second major change that we did was allow daycare facilities permitted by right in business districts and CRE. So daycare facilities are, have a lot of the, of what is considered permitted by right in a lot of business districts, a lot of them would have a lot of the similar intensity and use of a daycare facility. CRE actually currently, and mostly due to historical reasons, but CRE includes church, churches, schools, the university, and they have daycare facilities. The, our largest daycare facilities in the city of Urbana are in CRE, so what we're doing is we're just acknowledging that they should be permitted in the future for, by right as opposed to being legally non-conforming as they are currently right now. That includes the Methodist Church, just on the other side of Lincoln Square Mall, the university lab daycare, you know, cool features of Urbana. So I, we did a little bit, staff did a little bit of research, we read up on DCFS to what to make these changes. Currently, we actually, as you can kind of see here, what we require now is that no daycare, no daycare home, and actually this chart's a little bit funny, but daycare B, no, is the largest you can go for daycare home occupation and that would be five, and then at anything more than five would be a special, a conditional use permit. And actually, most daycare homes at, are, that are allowed by DCFS are for eight children. And that's because they have very stringent requirements about ages and at eight children, that's when you start getting into, you need to have an employee there, which means you need more parking, and that's very much of what we regulate in our zoning ordinance for home occupations. So we felt like we should probably be complementing the two. So those are proposed changes for daycare homes.
Questions for Lily?
Yes.
Mary Alice?
So I'm curious, exempting the exterior visibility provisions to all activities and equipment customary to daycare homes, why it was left kind of open-ended in terms of where in the yard and not relegated to the backyard?
Oh, sure, yeah. Well, so Steph, we did a little bit of research in that and we looked at some of the daycare homes and neighborhoods and we noticed that there are already play equipment in the front yard and it doesn't seem to appear as a nuisance. So there's currently like, I, I did a little bit of, of walking and then I also drove through, like the north side neighborhood has a lot of daycare neighbor, daycare homes and there was play equipment in the front yards. It didn't seem, appear to be a nuisance and that's usually when you make those kinds of requirements for the yards, whether it would have a huge impact on the neighborhood and the community, so.
So even though it's not allowed at the moment, people are still doing it, that's what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, no one's complaining about it, so it sounds like people like kids and their equipment in the yard. I don't know. All right, thank you.
We could add that.
I was just thinking across-
Dennis had a question, then you can go.
You have to raise your hand.
I'm sorry. I get excited about some things.
Like school, you know. And my question was exactly what-
Yeah.
The question was that, would the play equipment be relegated to the backyard or side yard? Could it be in the front yard? Because we don't usually allow cars to park in the front yard on the grass, but we would allow this.
Uh, right, well, so I think there is a different, like, there's probably not gonna be the same kind of rutting and, and nuisance issues that you'd have with parking a car than the play equipment, so that, that shouldn't necessarily be treated as the same, but we do allow, we, we do allow certain things in your, your front yard, especially if they allow like landscaping and landscape materials, so say if this was something that would be garden equipment, that would be allowed to be in your front yard and the, the difference between garden equipment and play equipment is, could be small.
And then, do the homes that service, provide you services require designated parking areas?
That's if you have more than eight kids and so that kind of, we were looking at that too when we were looking at our home occupation regulations.
Sharice?
No, I was just going to comment, across the street from my house is a daycare facility and the way that her property is, is she's on the corner of Row Mine and what would be Ellis. Her, her address is on Row Mine though, but there's this huge side lot, what we, what I would call a side like area, that, that's where her, her play area is, which is right across the street from my house, from my front door. I don't have, and I don't have a problem with that and what I've noticed when I, when I've driven around my neighborhood is that there are a few lots that are like that, where there's just a little side, on the other side of a driveway, you know, everything is fenced in, the children are not running wild all over the place, they keep, they, they, they keep it separate from the rest of the yard and from, and a person would actually have to walk past a fenced-in area in most of these, these daycare facilities that I've seen. So it, it's, it's still made safe for the children.
And I, I think, and this is a little off cuff, but I think when I was looking at, I mapped the daycare homes and that your, your ward had a lot of daycare homes.
We have a lot of daycare homes.
Which can be a very affordable form of childcare and, but it's also kind of a difficult business and some of that is the regulations and DCFS does have fencing requirements and, you know, if you have a shed with garden tools, it has to be locked. There's a lot of things that they do and they inspect the facilities for that.
And, and I have a relative that does daycare and she's required to have fencing and have, you know, all of these other amenities that, that are needed to, in order for a, a child to be in what they would call a safe environment, so.
And I can regale you guys forever about how this came about, but it was very similar circumstance where a woman had a very modest operation in her home and traffic commission had just approved a drop-off drop zone and we didn't know about it, so we reached out to them and said, hey, you know, you need a home occupation permit, and then upon looking at that, as I was a very brand-new employee at the time, she wasn't really allowed to have that, only six unrelated children, which is what she claims on DCFS, and if she was going to try to protest that for a variance, it would have been the, the application money, which I've, so I've heard, as Illinois Extension says on their website, it can be very hard to operate these businesses and to be profitable.
Yes.
Seem difficult.
Can I, can I just jump in and, and piggyback off something that Lily just mentioned with, which I think goes to something that Dennis had asked a minute ago about parking. So we found that the area that, that daycare homes can be considered a nuisance is often just in areas for dropping kids off. So sometimes you might, you might just have a situation where that can create problems and so sort of on an ad hoc basis, those will sometimes go to the traffic commission and get approval through traffic commission. One thing that we're proposing with these changes, this is on page two of Exhibit A, if you want to take a look, but under B and then three, we're, we're proposing to add this line that says the zoning administrator may require a drop-off zone as a condition of approval for the home occupation permit based on demand generated by the use, safety, and on-street parking supply. So we wanted to add that so that any home occupation daycare permit that comes in, we'll look at it because every case is going to be different and if it, if it seems like parking, or sorry, drop-off area could be an issue, then we're, we're proposing this provision that would give us some, some flexibility to require that.
Yeah, actually, two daycare homes of similar size went to traffic commission just recently and that was not necessary. I think Eric was there. Yeah, but we have that added in there because that's the only time we really do get comments from citizens is, is traffic and wondering what's going on. And then that's the great thing about the home occupation permit is we do, staff looks at each case individually.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I'd like to move approval of ordinance number two thousand nineteen zero four zero two six, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, revising Articles two and five to amend definitions and regulations for daycare homes and facilities, plan case number twenty-three seventy T nineteen.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City councilmembers Hershey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on this agenda is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero four dash zero two seven, which is an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, omnibus textman amendment, plan case number twenty-three seventy-one T nineteen, and please welcome Sam Stewart, who is our planning intern, to present this case.
Hello, Sam.
Thank you for the introduction.
Sam, before you start, can I just introduce you really quickly? I know you were just introduced, kind of, but Sam is going to be graduating from the U of I Planning Department, what, in a week or, a week or so?
Yeah, so soon. Two weeks, two weeks.
Okay, and so Sam's been working with us for several months. We initially brought him in to help us crunch the numbers on the What's in Your Square Initiative and Sam did just a bang-up job with all of that. You know, he's an Excel spreadsheet master, so most of, you know, most of the results, well, actually all of the results from that survey and those exercises couldn't have been done without, without Sam, so really appreciate, appreciate the work he's put in, so as our final gesture of gratitude, we're having him present to city council.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is this an appropriate occasion for hazing?
All right. So first off, thank you for the introduction. I'll just get to it. So the articles that we're proposing to change are Articles four, six, seven, eight, nine, and thirteen, and these are just kind of small, small changes and so I'll just go straight to it. So in Article four, we're basically saying that we recognize, the city of Urbana recognizes the online map as the official zoning map and the key point is we're also going to still provide printed copies upon request. Articles six, seven, and thirteen, it's just going to change the word handicap to accessible or accessibility, whichever one makes sense. Article eight will then also, will replace, we are, we have replaced two thousand one access management guidelines to two thousand thirteen guidelines, that is written by COATS. And then we also clarified the screening requirements and, and demand, when it, setbacks are demanded. What's also important to note is changes within Articles seven, eleven, and thirteen, we changed, well, we, we're basically allowing landowners, contract purchasers, and people with owner's permissions to apply for conditional use permits, special use permits variances, and then planned unit developments. And then I'm gonna pass it off to Lily to talk about the signs.
And just to clarify a little bit for that last one, some, because there's four things listed there, some things didn't really mention who could apply and some of them, of the changes, as you can see in your Exhibit A, some of the changes were just adding the language that there's contract purchases and people with the permission of the owner. Okay, so Article nine, signs, we did the, probably the most amount of proposed changes are in Article nine. That's our sign in OASs regulations. The first change would be a general formatting change where we remove the letter, bullet letters. We don't do that anywhere else in the zoning ordinance and it, it felt a little strange that we were gonna have that formatting. Through the definitions section of sign in OASs regulations, we had a couple of moments and definitions where we added the words temporary or permanent. We really wanted to just clarify temporary signs and permanent signs for, for common everyday questions that we get from business owners who are interested in a sign or residents who are interested and people who are trying to make sense of the sign regulations and try to make it a little bit easier by adding those words in definitions, you can sometimes let people know where in the regulations they can find the particular sign they're interested in or what they're looking for. We also added the definition blade banners, or sometimes referred to as feather flags. We're going with blade banners just because, again, we're trying to clarify things for people. It's a banner for us and it currently our zoning ordinance allows, allows blade banners in the temporary signs under banners. It's a vertical banner on a pole on one side, that's what we consider it today. We decided to add a definition for that type of sign like we do with many other signs just because it's a very popular sign type. It's inexpensive relatively compared to a lot of different signs and so we get a lot of questions about it and people are trying to make sense of the sign regulation, so we decided to kind of, instead of just calling it a vertical banner attached on one side by a pole, it's a blade banner and so we've defined that. We added in temporary signs, we added B one, B two, and CCD for zoning districts where they're allowed. Do you note that as you're allowing something, allowing these zoning districts, temporary signs are only allowed to be up for twenty-eight days max a year and oftentimes- And oftentimes there, uh, it could, it will be less if you want a couple more. And this includes grand opening signs, um, inflatables and banners. And so we felt like if you had a business in B1, B2, you should be, probably be able to have a grand opening sign. And it's only allowed up for a certain amount of time that we specify in our temporary signs. Um, we did increase the number of flags to three, just because that's generally commonly what you see in City of Urbana, including the city building, which has three flags. Um, Europa House has three flags, a couple other places. Um, and then we added a table at the end of the sign, uh, sign regulations for temporary sign requirements for the ease of understanding. Ta- our tables at the end of the, the sign regulations, uh, article are the most popular part of the sign article. It's oftentimes the first place people go. Even people who install signs professionally in the City of Urbana, they frequently just read the, the table in the back. And for most types of signs, we have a table that defines like what the regulations are in a kind of visual manner of a table. So we did that for signs. It wasn't terrifyingly easy and it looks a little bit, um, this is, could potentially be why you don't see this in today, but here I'll go to it right now. And blow it up a little bit. So we tried to make it easier for people. Banner free sanding has a slightly different size requirement than a blade banner or a banner wall-mounted. None of these are different than what is currently here today. We just don't have a table for it for people to understand it easier. So, those are proposed changes.
Questions for Sam or Lily? Mary Alice?
Um, I find this quite fortuitous, uh, that we've had conversations at City Council in terms of how to move forward with um, different planning cases. And what I'd like to, uh, make a motion is to send this ordinance back to the Committee of the Whole um, with the purpose of clarifying some of the language within the PUD. Right now, the PUD language, if I can pull this up, um, only says that City Council review, the City Council shall review the Application and Plan Commission. I'd like to clarify that, that the City Council shall first review the Application and Planning Commission recommendation at a Council of the Whole, um, before moving it forward to final approval at the City Council. I am also interested in hearing, um, conversation from my fellow council members in terms of any other, um, items that we would like to move towards City of, sorry, Council of the Whole. So my motion is to move this back to the Committee of the Whole for conversation and direction to staff.
And I'd like to second that because I also agree that, um, there are aspects of the process which we go through as, uh, council members, which would be facilitated as far as, um, ability to understand and, and absorb the information that we're given and also to give the public a chance to speak to those instances that would, uh, that aren't currently allowed, uh, under our process today. And I'd like to, uh, tweak them a little bit to make that more adjustable.
Eric?
I, I will support that. I, I don't think there's any problem with anything you've proposed. It, it's, uh.
Okay, that was what I was wondering. Afraid to ask.
Yeah, we're just taking the opportunity, Mary Alice has initiated, to take the opportunity to, uh, also roll in, um, other, uh, issues that people have been talking about that if we're going to dig into the zoning ordinance. So I expect that everything that you have, everything that you've proposed, at least, I guess nobody else has commented on it, but I will comment on it. It all seems to make perfectly good sense. And thank you for, you know, digging into this, clarifying it, making it easier for, uh, people to understand and, and, and to work with and to con- uh, conform to it. So I, I appreciate that and it's very much in, also in the flavor of, of how you dug into the daycare stuff. So I, I think that's very good. And so we're, we're just, uh, so this motion should not be interpreted as any negative commentary on what you've done. It's just maybe opportunistically we'll, we'll look at something else that we have in mind as well that also pertains to the zoning ordinance.
Any other comments?
I have.
Sharice?
Um, my, uh, and my question is about the, the, the table that you have and the standards.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, one of the things that, um, when I'm looking at this, would, would, I, I think that could be added, um, is possibly pictures? Some type?
I completely agree and staff has talked about it.
Diagram?
Plenty, for sure. Uh, we would like to do that as, just as, as staff can find the time. So we'll, we'll take that back to the drawing board for sure.
Well, because, you know, we live in one of those picture society, societies now, people, you know.
Yeah.
Don't know what definitions are. But, um, so if you have a picture of a hamburger, you know, they push the hamburger button, yeah. So now I, I think it would be helpful, because I'm gonna be honest, I, I was, I was going to ask you, what's a blade banner? And then I saw the definition, of course. And I'm never, because I don't do signs, I don't know anything about signs, uh, I'm totally ignorant when it comes to signs.
You can always call your city.
But it would be nice, like, before I buy the sign that I know.
I have that problem every day.
Yeah.
Yes.
That I know what kind of sign I'm going to have.
That just happened at Verizon, where we had to say, oh, I'm so sorry, you spent hundreds of dollars, but we tried to tell you. And then they're like, well, you did tell us, but we just forgot this one line.
Yeah, so, you know, just, it's just one of those things that maybe if you, if you have the little hamburger button there, uh, it, you know, it might be helpful for the public to know what the regulation is regarding that particular hamburger. That's all.
Yes, for sure. I get the analogy.
Yeah.
We don't sell hamburgers.
You know what I mean.
Good, that's actually a good suggestion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to send this ordinance to Committee of the Whole, which will be next week. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, Jared?
I just had one coming, uh, for Carol. Because I, I already, I saw you, I knew you were going to say something about this, but I also wanted, uh, when we, I think we've kind of finally got to some language that we all are in agreement on as far as what we're looking for. But I think it would be useful for us to also see, what does that mean for your, uh, processes of staff?
Um, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I, I'm a little concerned by sending this to the Committee of Ho- of the Whole next week because this issue has come up and I have repeatedly asked for time to try to come up with a way of addressing it. And, um, and we have not yet been able to meet and have, and have a, a staff-generated proposal. Uh, Mary Alice had, has made a specific proposal in terms of language as it relates to PUDs. Um, and we can respond to that, but we would like to have ample time to, to prepare a thoughtful response. And I'm not sure we'll be able to do that by the, by next week Committee of the Whole meeting.
I, I would like to just add that this particular sign, just the sign stuff alone, took about three months. It took a lot of research and everything and time, so just in case you're wondering how much time. It's not that much, but.
Well, an alternative approach here would be to pass the changes that are in front of you and bring the separate issue back. Dennis?
Well, I, I think that the, the amount of time that would take to make this adjustment is really just only a few words interjected into the current ordinance and that we would probably ask legal staff to give us a review of that. So, um, I don't see that it's being, uh, I don't, I don't think that it will take months to sort this out. I think that the City Council has sort of had a, a sense of what are, where the direction, what it wants to go to, and we'd like to propose some language. Now, we'd be happy to have staff look at that language, but I think we know kind of what we want to achieve.
Carol?
Just, just to clarify, it's not the, it's not the number of words, it's the implication of the words that, that we need time to, to give you a thoughtful response on. I, I'm not suggesting that the words are complicated.
Eric?
So I guess one thing we could do is defeat Mary Alice's motion. Approve the motion that's before us, the ordinance that's before us. But, uh, have on the Committee of the Whole an item for discussion, uh, about our procedures with, um, uh, I, I think that the, I mean, I, here's, here's my sense of what's behind this, although it's Mary Alice's motion, but, but maybe I share some of her feelings, that these projects are coming at us pretty fast. And, and that's great. And, um, but, uh, but we, we, I don't feel, I think the motion reflects the fact that we don't feel that we have a completely satisfactory procedure for, uh, for dealing with them. Uh, and, and for ensuring that, that we, we, you know, they are considered at, at our level uh, appropriately, with appropriate deliberation. Now, very much appreciate the fact that the planned unit development that we had tonight uh, was, you know, that the final decision was deferred till next week. And I, and I understand that that's, reflects your sensitivity to the concerns we've already expressed. And I appreciate that. I think that's great. Uh, I think what we're talking about now is can we, um, can we make that explicit in our procedures? So that this is a matter of course, that, you know, that we have the chance to have this kind of, uh, this, this level of, of deliberation. And I'd be happy to, um, I'd be happy to pass the, uh, you know, pass this zoning ordinance, you know, that, that we have before us tonight, uh, with the proviso that we have an agenda item for dealing substantively with this issue, uh, uh, next week. And, uh, uh, because it does seem, um, you know, it seems a matter of some, uh, you know, I wouldn't say it's extreme urgency, but I think it's, it's something that we have to deal with promptly.
Carol?
I just want to, I, I, I appreciate that we're, we're talking about the role of the council and I really appreciate the, the additional, um, role that you want to have in, in moving uh, in an orderly way through a PUD approval. But as, as we mentioned, I think when this was originally raised, is it calls into question the role of the Plan Commission and what's the purpose of a public hearing at the Plan Commission if that will be repeated at the council. So it, it's that implication, you may want to get to the point where you eliminate, um, that as, as something that the Plan Commission would take on. But, but it's that, it's, it's, it's those dual roles that, that we want to explore and we want to give you some, um, thoughtful advice about.
And all cogent points, let's discuss them next week, beginning at seven o'clock when we're fresh.
Mary Alice?
Um, so here are my thoughts. Um, my thought is, is that the, the PUD seems to be the easiest component of the items that would address this. There are more conversations that would have to happen in terms of larger projects. You know, what happened tonight, I think, really illustrates our concerns. So it wasn't until, and I personally contacted the mayor and said that I really would like to have this either removed from the, um, the PUD, the final, uh, approval, removed from council tonight and moved to council of the whole. Um, she offered a solution in which we move both of them to the council of, uh, sorry, special meeting, not a council of the whole, to give us a little bit of time. Um, one of my concerns was this. A, we are setting up expectations for the developers that we are going to approve it that night. I think that is disingenuous. Um, if we hadn't made outright contact in saying, you know, we have some concerns that we want, rather, we don't have some concerns, we want to discuss this. We want to discuss this item. If we didn't have that opportunity and I just made a motion to automatically send it to the council of the whole and the developers sitting in the audience expecting us to approve it, I think that is, does them a disservice. Um, the second piece that I wanted to say was that there were things that came up today in conversation that I think everybody wanted to talk about. And there is a piece of information that we wanted to find out about, which is what does I dot plan to do? And I hadn't thought of that, honestly, until that conversation came up tonight. And I think it's important that at least we see those plans. So here's what I am willing to do with my motion. I am willing to pass, uh, the motion for the signs to alleviate that concern and to send the remainder of this back to City Council of the Whole, I'm sorry, Council of the Whole for next week, um, to add in language specifically for the PUDs. And in addition, to have a conversation about the larger developments and how we would like to see that ordinance change. So I don't know how to amend that correctly. Um, I, so I have an amendment on the floor, uh, to send this back to Council of the Whole as is. And what I'm proposing is to break this apart into two pieces. One piece would be sent back to the Committee of the Whole, the second piece would be approved tonight. So Jim, I'm looking at you, what do I do?
Which, which part are you proposing to approve tonight?
All the stuff about the signs.
Only the signs?
Well, you can throw in the, I mean, the other stuff is, is nothing that's pending, right? I mean, like the, the GIS map, we just passed that, so that's got a whole year. So we're not holding up anything by not publishing that. Um, and if that's the piece, I don't have a problem passing the rest of it. The GIS piece, um, shouldn't impact anything, um, for, until next May, right?
March.
March, sorry.
And really before that, unfortunately.
When, when would that timeframe be?
Uh, definitely January, that's when you, I think you.
Okay, so, but that still gives us some time.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, here's one other, one other factor I, that Carol just reminded me of. Lori Pearson, our zoning administrator and planning manager, is actually out of town until next Monday. So she needs to be, she needs to be involved in this conversation. So we could put this on an agenda for the following Committee of the Whole, when, after Lori is back in town. Because she, Lori really needs to be part of this. As, as the zoning administrator.
Sure, sure. No, I agree that Lori should be part of this. Can we just hold a special meeting, um, the night of City Council when she's back?
She literally won't have time to even.
I don't know when she's back.
The twenty-second.
Oh, twenty-second, sorry, sorry. I thought she was back this week.
No, 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 a week from tonight.
Okay.
She doesn't get back.
So move it to, to City Council of the Holes, or Council of the Whole, two meetings.
To Committee of the Whole meetings. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
We need pictures, yes. Two Committee of the Whole meetings.
I want to call it the Cow Meeting, but I don't.
So we can, are you willing to pass what's been presented tonight?
No. I am willing to pass all but the GIS map.
All but the GIS?
Yeah, the, the, the publishing of the zoning map, which is the very first thing. So I'm willing to pass all of it, but that very, Section One, sorry, is this four, three?
It's, yeah, it's, uh, four, three, where we talk about the official zoning map.
Yeah, so four, three. That does not have to be acted on until January. Dennis might have a comment, as my second.
You could withdraw your motion, Mary Alice.
I've got staff raising hands, so I don't know.
Kevin and Charlie?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of, uh, concerns that I hope, uh, Jim Simon can help address. Um, so the, the first is that when we do text amendment cases, we publish specific legal ads that, that deal with the specific things that we're, um, that we're considering. Um, so I don't have the legal ad in front of me right now, but I, I'm not sure that, um, that considering things that were not published in the legal ad is something that we can do. Um, also, I'm not sure if considering an entirely new concept would be something that could or should be done without, uh, Plan Commission's consultation. So I'd like, uh, Jim's opinion on both of those issues.
If you're being asked to approve or, or deal with an issue that's not been advertised, but it's generally a requirement that it be advertised, then you've got to go through that. You know, not advertise, but notice. So you would have to go through that. Uh, what was the second one?
Well, the, the second one is, I guess.
A whole new item?
Well, it should, um, I guess if it didn't need to be re-advertised, would it's, would a new idea need to go back through Plan Commission for their consideration? So if.
Well, now you're getting into, I, I'd have to read the section on the planning, Plan Commission, and I haven't done that for.
plan commission, and I haven't done that for this. The problem is, is anytime something comes from the plan commission to council, and the council wants to tweak it, then the question is, is are they changing it? And should that go back to council? And our history here is, it has not gone back to council. Our plan commission, excuse me, I'm getting caught up between council commission and committee. But, so it, I mean, if it's a complete rewrite, a complete change of something, you know, somebody brings in a two-story building plan and the council decides, no, we want it to be a 15-story building, mixed use and completely different project essentially, then that's one thing. I would expect, I would assume, without having read and having it memorized, the plan commission portion of the zoning ordinance, that that would probably have to go back to the plan commission because that's, that's virtually a whole new project. But the tweaks, and then where does a whole new project start and a tweak end?
Does the clerk have a suggestion for?
Could I, could I comment?
Yes.
All right. So we're not trying to adjust anything that comes from the planning commission as a recommendation. We're receiving those recommendations as they're given. So we're not interfering or we're not, we're not trying to adjust any, any process that the planning commission has in its own entity. We're interested in changing City Council's process so that it is equitable for us to contemplate the projects in due time and also to allow public, the public to interact with the council. And what is the difference between having a public, public input in a city, in a, in the planning commission and the City Council is that we do not attend the plan commission meetings, nor do we participate in dialogue. We can only talk as, as among ourselves on any topic here, meeting in the public forum of the City Council or Committee of the Whole. And therefore, the public can only address its concerns to the City Council in that forum also. And so they need one due process to be able to understand that things are appearing on our agenda and can be addressed to us. And secondly, that we can talk among ourselves to reach a agreement and a consensus about our, by voting. So to say that all this conversation takes place in the planning commission works for the planning commission, but it has no effect for us sitting in the City Council. And that's what's the difference, Carol. So therefore, I think that we should support the concept of drafting a change in our procedure which affects only us as the City Council. And it doesn't affect any decision or part of a decision that is being forwarded to us on a specific case. We're not talking about any case. We're talking about the process and allowing due process.
Can this be done as a separate ordinance?
If I could.
Charlie?
Yeah. So I, but I would suggest is that the language that Dennis just used about directing staff to develop a process that honors the direction that Dennis has indicated of, of having some type, some of these materials go to Committee of the Whole. That is, that either belongs in specific places within the zoning ordinance, which requires careful legal review, or it can be placed in our council rules in a manner similar to the resolution on resolutions. So you could, you could modify the, the City Council rules. So what I would suggest, the easiest way to, to, to accomplish this, I think, is to vote on the ordinance as presented, up or down, and then direct, and have a separate motion that directs staff to bring the appropriate language to accomplish what you want done, either via a separate review of the zone, or a separate set of amendments to the zoning ordinance that are properly advertised in the process by which the zoning ordinance needs to be modified with, with public, public, with legal notification and, and running it through the plan commission, or to bring a version of the resolution on resolutions, maybe a amendment to the resolution on resolutions that spells out exactly which items you want to come to Committee of the Whole from plan commission. Because the way that the, the zoning ordinance written, is written, it just says, the plan commission makes a recommendation to City Council. And so it, it doesn't really say, well, it says to City Council, and so it comes to City Council. It doesn't come to Committee of the Whole. And so it's, it's really something that we need to sit down with legal and figure out where it really belongs.
But I don't see, if I can interrupt, how this would need to be reviewed by planning commission because it has nothing to do with their procedures. It has to do with how we receive things. We're merely redirecting what they do, whatever it is, to the Committee of the Whole.
Then you need to, to change the way the zoning ordinance is written.
And I can, and we already have drafted some suggestions. But I don't see that this needs to be reviewed by the planning commission because it's not their business.
It's a text amendment.
Mary Alice?
So according to the introduction of this, it says, a zoning administrator requests a multi-part amendment to the zoning ordinance to include changes such as revising definitions, rewriting sections to make them more understandable. I just want to reiterate, rewriting sections to make them more understandable. All I'm proposing here is that in the PUD, we specify the City Council goes to Council of the Whole. That, to me, is making it more understandable and more clear. I don't know, I'm sorry?
The planning commission.
From the planning commission to the, to the, I'm going to call it cow for now because I keep miscating the, the cow. And I, I don't know if that meets your legal definition. I don't know if exactly how it was done in the, in the newspaper. So I don't know if that, if that meets that. But if I just read specifically in terms of this memo, rewriting sections to make them more understandable, I feel personally that it falls under that, that item. And, and so I, I feel like we need to amend the zoning ordinance and not amend the resolution on resolutions. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. I think that it is, it articulates it more clear to everybody who's involved in the zoning ordinance, rather than having to go to the resolutions of the resolutions to figure out how to interpret the zoning ordinance. So.
I understand what you're saying. I would do recommend that you pass what's in front of you tonight and then in a separate ordinance amend, then we can focus on amending the zoning ordinance to reflect your, your focus, rather than holding up the rest of this. There's, you, you, you can amend these zoning ordinance more than once a year, correct? Okay.
As often as you would like.
Okay. And that would give our planning administrator, zoning administrator and planning manager a chance to get back into town. Eric?
I do think that the mayor and her staff have gotten the message about our concerns.
Lot and clear.
I don't, I don't think we have to hold this, this ordinance hostage in order to make that clear.
Okay, so, so I, I appreciate that. I would feel better because I know we're coming into budget season. I know that we are going to be really busy. I would feel better if it was put on the Committee of the Whole agenda by staff to give us a proposal by the middle of May. I want to work that into the agenda. I would feel a lot more comfortable with that. I would be willing, if that was the case, to pull my amendment and then move approval.
And please send the text of your amendment to staff and to me, please.
Absolutely.
All right. So because we're making a change, I don't know, we're making a new motion.
So there's a motion on the floor.
I was pulling the motion if that's allowed.
Yes, you may.
Okay.
All right.
I agree.
All right. We back to the original motion?
We don't have a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
All right.
All right, I'm going to move ordinance number 2019 dash 04 dash 027, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance with an omnibus text amendment as discussed with, from plan case number 2371 dash T dash 19 forward, or I guess we're just approving it, so, for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Any further discussion?
Wasn't that exciting, Sam?
That very much was.
Wait, wait, wait. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I mentioned that we might haze you, right? This was the hazing.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Hershey.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Sam. And I appreciate your work on what's in your square as well.
Thank you.
And we'll follow up on this other topic.
It's pretty funny because, you know, you got hit with all of this stuff. It's what you do with the work that you're doing.
And pictures.
Way to go. With no further business before this meeting, it's adjourned and this will be followed by a City Council Committee of the Whole special meeting. It'll be chaired by Ms. Sharice Hershey.